And what that shows is what we call the freshwater-saltwater interface. And so that is the area in which the freshwater transitions to saltwater. And it is very slowly moving westward as a result of pumping of our groundwater system. Next slide, please. So one of the other things, and I'm sorry this is so small, that impacts the way that groundwater flows particularly in this region. Let me drive on this one, Joe. Is that here's Bowling Green. You can follow my cursor here. There is significant faulting in this portion of the system. In the northwestern corner of the coastal plain aquifer system, there are a series of faults where the aquifer has been dislodged. And what that does is that interrupts the preferential pathways that water flows within the system. So what can happen sometimes is those faults can function like boundaries. And that can allow the water levels to be drawn down at different rates in response to pumping. So that's another complication that's operating where you're located in the system. This fault right to the west of you is the Louisa Fault. And I'm sure many of you are aware that there was an earthquake not too long ago on that fault line that was pretty significant. And they have periodic earthquakes, albeit much smaller than the one that occurred. I don't know, I think it's about a decade ago now. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That does have some impact on the way the system works. Next slide, Joe. So this slide here is what we call hydrographs. The blue line represents the water level in a series of monitoring wells that are jointly operated by the USGS and DEQ. What these water levels show you is basically our groundwater bank account. These are all wells that have been around since the 1970s. And so if you had this kind of result in your checking account, you might be a little bit concerned because the trend is down. And it's been going down for a very, very long time. So that's something that beginning in 2009, I had the privilege to point out to the governor and let him know that there were some things that needed to change in order to put us on track to get back to a more sustainable place. What you see here as well are a number of, and I would just go to each one. So that's the one that's located in Caroline County. And as you can see, it's still going down. There was a brief uptick that was probably related to somebody going offline for a short period of time. The next one down. You see that one's leveling out and is getting a little flatter and is even starting to come up a little bit. That's the result of a permit action that DEQ took to take an industrial user off of groundwater and connect them to the public system and then RICO. Go down to the next one. You can see some flattening there. That flattening represents a change in what we call apportionment for the James City County Public Water Supply. The James City County is the largest public water supply that operates solely on groundwater. And what that is there is a permit change where they changed the level at which they withdrew groundwater from the aquifer. Okay, on the bottom here, you see a big jump. And then you see it leveling back off again and coming back up a little bit. What we have there is that big jump is when international paper closed for a period of about a year. They were the largest single withdrawal on the Potomac Aquifer at the time at approximately 36 million gallons a day. When they restarted in 2011, they restarted at about 12. And now they're in a permit that caps them at, I believe it's about 16 MGD. In the next one there, you can't quite see it. It's off the edge there, but we've got a little bit of increase there. And that's in Gloucester County. And that's in response to some changes that West Rock made, the paper plant in West Point, in response to a permit of ours and in response to changing their apportionment. And what they did there was they withdrew some additional water from one of the upper aquifers as well as embarked upon a very aggressive water conservation program. And then in the next two, you don't really see much in the way of leveling off. Part of that is that it takes longer for that part of the system to see any improvements from the permit changes that we've made to the biggest users. So eventually, there could be some positive response from that. But the reality is it's probably too far away to make much difference. And what you see there in terms of drawdown is probably almost entirely the result of local withdrawals. Next slide. So what are the management objectives or the goals for the Groundwater Management Act of 1992? The General Assembly saw fit to start managing groundwater back in the 50s. And that program has taken on various forms. And they've made several different statutory changes. And the one that we have today was enacted by the General Assembly in 1992. And basically what they directed DEQ to do was to regulate all future withdrawals and reissuances of existing withdrawals in a manner to preserve future supplies for all Virginians through a sustainable management approach to the resource. And we do that through a number of different tools. And I'll talk about those a little bit later. But we can break down that goal into a couple of different objectives that I've already talked about a little bit already. The first is we want to change that hydraulic gradient back so to the extent that we can so that the water does go from west to east and actually end up back in the Chesapeake Bay and in the ocean. Because it has a significant role in ensuring that those bodies of water don't get too salty and have other types of consequences to a whole variety of things. So we'd like to improve that through the implementation of this program. The other thing we'd like to do is we'd like to bring up water levels that have declined below a water level that was set for us to achieve. And I'll talk in detail about that in a minute. And then finally, when both of the two items above occur, but most directly, water level declines. What happens is that you can see land subsidence and a loss of storage in the aquifer that can't ever be recharged. So we want to avoid that. And unfortunately, we do have a number of instances within the coastal plain where that has already occurred. And we want to avoid that occurring in other portions of the coastal plain. What happens there is when that water level falls below the unit that confines it, what happens is those spaces in between those pieces of gravel or those pieces of silt or those pieces of clay are removed, then those pore spaces collapse and then the land sinks. And when the land sinks and those pore spaces collapse, they can't be rehydrated again and fill back up. So that's what we're trying to avoid. Next slide, please. So under this program, in order to achieve those objectives, who needs a permit? And some of you may have heard this before. But any user, for any purpose basically, except for one, in a groundwater management who has a withdrawal that exceeds 300 gallons in a single month, has to get a permit from DEQ in order to withdraw that water. Okay, and just to kind of give you some context, 300,000 gallons in a month kind of equates to the water use of approximately 20 to 30 homes, single-family homes. One inch of irrigation applied over 11 acres. The amount of water that's typically used to irrigate for one month on an 18-hole golf course is another example. Or operating a well, a single well with 125 gallon per minute yield for 40 hours. So it's really not a whole lot of water. But that's the amount of water that can draw the aquifer down within a cone of depression by a foot or more. So that's kind of the background to how that number came about. So there are a few exceptions. Most of those exceptions are related to oil and gas and mineral mining that's already regulated by the Department of Energy in Virginia. However, there are conditions to that exemption that relate to whether or not the withdrawal, once it starts, results in either a water quantity impact. And that might be indicated by a neighboring well that goes dry or a water quality impact that's negative. If those events occur, then DEQ can require that they get a permit. The other exemption is for individual, single-family homes on an individual private well. But there's a catch to that, which I'll talk about in the next slide. So because people were developing subdivisions on individual wells that were really, really large and exceeded 300,000 gallons in a single month as a way to get out of getting a DEQ permit. And that was happening so frequently that the estimated amount of new withdrawals from those unpermitted, single-family wells was reaching a point where it was as much as a million gallons per day, per year, which would, within six or seven years, wipe out many of the gains that we made by cutting back existing permits. The General Assembly saw fit to take a step toward regulation of that loophole. And basically what the law now requires is that if there's a developer of a subdivision of, what is it, is it 20 units or 30? 30 or more units, they have to apply to DEQ for a modeling evaluation and receive a recommendation from DEQ about which aquifer is the most sustainable for their subdivision. There's a $5,000 fee for DEQ to conduct that modeling exercise. There is some information that needs to be collected on site to carry out that modeling by the developer. And that's called a geophysical borehole, which is a fancy term for drilling a well, but running some fancy instruments into it so that we can determine how thick each aquifer is and at what depth they occur at that development site. And then we put that into our modeling evaluating. We have 60 days under the law to perform that evaluation. And we provide that aquifer recommendation. Now, the law doesn't currently require that the developer abide by that recommendation. However, if they do not, they have to develop a mitigation agreement that requires each homeowner to accept a certain responsibility for any off-site existing wells that might ultimately be affected after the development is built out and people are pumping water. And that agreement has to be approved by DEQ and recorded with the plat in the land records. Next slide, please. So let's get into some of the details about how we evaluate whether or not a withdrawal is sustainable and can be issued a permit. I want to talk about some terms first. We use some kind of terms that for normal people probably don't mean much. So I want to be sure that I try to define them for you. We use the following three terms somewhat interchangeably, but they don't exactly mean the same thing. The first two pretty much mean the same thing. The third one there is basically the result of the evaluation and how that compares to the first two. So the first item is called the 80% drawdown criteria. And then the second item is called the critical surface. Both of those represent a certain water level in each aquifer that we are obligated when we issue permits to keep the water level above. And I'll go into some detail about that. A critical cell is what's identified by the model when the water level falls below that. Okay? So that's a very important concept. And it's one that is critical to DEQ deciding whether it can issue a permit. The second thing that we look very closely at, and these aren't the only things, but these are the things that relate directly to the water availability for any proposed or expanding withdrawal. The second one that we talk about is what we call the area of impact. And what that is, is you may have heard back in your science class in high school or college, something about wells cause a cone of depression. An area of impact is basically a cone of depression. And I'll show you a picture and talk a little bit more about that. And the importance of that criteria is that all wells expand pretty much offsite and draw the aquifer down to some extent. We tried to characterize what that drawdown looks like for each withdrawal. And then what the law requires is that there's a certain level of protection that's offered to people that already exist within that area of impact. So next slide. All right, so this is a complicated slide. I apologize in advance, but I'm going to go through some things kind of systematically. The first thing I'm going to start with is all the way to the left. Okay, so we have 100% number. And if you can see where the arrow is, the arrow at the bottom is the top of the aquifer that the well is going to remove water from. Okay, in your case with your production wells, that's the Potomac Aquifer. So your well has screens that are open to that aquifer. And that's where the water from that aquifer goes into the well and ultimately gets pumped out. Okay, at the top of that line is the surface of the land. Okay, and so the critical surface or the 80% drawdown criterion that has to be met is the water level has to remain above where it says 20%, where that dashed line is. That's the level that we're required to keep all wells with the water level above. So that's basically our margin of safety. Because as you heard me say earlier, when that water level there, if that dashed line were to fall into that green area, what that would mean is that we have land subsidence occurring and we're losing overall capacity in the aquifer. Okay, so I'm going to go up to those next two dashed lines. So what we do when we evaluate the 80% drawdown criteria is we run a model. And what the model does is it takes the current water levels based on our monitoring network and evaluates the withdrawal that's proposed by that center well. And we simulate where the water is going to get drawn down to as a result of the volume that they're proposing to pump out. So that's the second dashed line. That's the model output that tells us where the water withdrawal is going to get. So in this case, if we look at each of these wells, the first well, if that is the result that comes back from the model, that the water level is simulated to fall below that 20% dashed line, DEQ cannot issue the permit. Okay? If it's like the well in the middle, that would be okay. We could issue the permit. It's above the 20% line. Okay? And in that level, that's just what it's going to be when you drill it to start with and you have the aquifer come up. And that's the static water level. Okay? There's a lot of stuff there, but that's basically, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to maintain that cushion of protection so that all those negative things I talked about back at the goals and objectives don't happen. Next. So I said, if there are places in the aquifer where the water level falls below that 20% mark, each of the cells in our model will be indicated in the evaluation, it's red on this GIS analysis, it's gray. But those are all areas in all of those aquifers that I talked about earlier combined where the water level is below that 20% statutory protection level. Okay, you see a pattern here? And do you see where you are? So what we have here is nearly all of the aquifers along the fall line. Because if you remember that conceptual model, it's very shallow on the western edge, so it dewater's first. So you can see that very plainly here. Is these critical cells follow the fall line and they follow Interstate 95, which is kind of a rule of thumb dividing line for where that occurs, where the shallowest part of the aquifer is. So think of the aquifer as a wedge, as a triangle, where the pointy end is at Interstate 95 and the fat end is down in the Chesapeake Bay. Okay, so it's always going to dewater along the fall line first. Okay, so as I said, this is a composite that shows all of the aquifers. So in the next slide, we'll look at just the Potomac Aquifer. And this is what you withdraw from. So you have some better things compared to some of the localities we deal with, which are down there to the northwest of Franklin, where they're already stuck in an area that we can't issue new permits in. So they're capped. They can't get any additional water from groundwater from this aquifer. So where you are, you have one primary critical cell that's in very close proximity to you. And we'll zoom in on that one in a minute. But there are also critical cells north and south of you. So depending on the volume, you could impact any three of those. Either that single critical cell, which is most likely to occur from any withdrawal of any significance. Or if it was a proposal that was large enough, it could affect either of those other two areas. So that's what we have to look at. And that's what you need to take into consideration as you think about future growth and development and what the best supply of water is for that development. Next slide. So I'm going to move on to the second concept before we zoom in. We'll zoom in when we talk specifically about your permit. And I'll have Joe talk a little bit about that since he's the one who's most familiar with your permit. In this case, the gray item here shows the cone of depression from a proposed well that's in the center. And so every well has a cone of depression like this. And what is unique about them is that the depth and width are directly related to the size of the withdrawal and the nature of the aquifer sediments from the aquifers that they're removing the water from. So that's unique to the shape of that cone of depression is unique to each aquifer and to each location within the same aquifer generally. So what we're looking at is identifying a circle where the well is the center, the proposed or existing well is the center. And we're going out and we're telling the model where that cone of depression draws down the aquifer one foot or more, stop and draw the line. Okay? That's what the law requires us to do. So within that blue area that Joe just highlighted, the light blue area, there will be a circle that will show up on a map. And any existing wells within it potentially, woo! And hopefully Mother Nature will be kind to us. Will have some obligation if there's a future impact where their well water level falls below what it was at the time in which that permit was issued. So if we look at the well, existing well A, and Joe has highlighted it with the red cursor here. What we have is that water level there corresponds to the cone of depression. So the water level will follow that lower edge of the cone of depression. And because that well is screened in the same aquifer that the proposed well is screened in and is in with that light blue area that Joe outlined before, they're one of the wells that has some protection after a permit is issued for that center well. Now, existing well B would not. And the reason it would not is while they have a well that goes down into the confined aquifer that's the same as the proposed well, the well screen is in a different aquifer that's above it. So because of that, that well would not have the same level of protection from the new withdrawal. Wow, that the first one would. And then well C would be a final situation where it's outside of the circle that we draw. And even though it's within the same confined aquifer. Next slide, please. So that was a lot of geology. So at this point, does anybody want to ask any questions about that before we move into your permit and some of the details that I talked about here as they relate to your permit?
This may be too early, but you had the town raise their wells up out to ground. I mean, raise them up off, you know, out of the water some, raise them up. Is that for reasons for this?
You mean the pump in the well?
We had to raise them up?
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to go to the? Did you want to go to the? I would go to the eighty percent one, okay. So what happens here is if your well falls below the top of the green confined aquifer, your pump is down there. That's prohibited by law. And the reason is that if the pump is down there, that cone of depression where it dewater's will automatically dewater the aquifer itself. And so that's what we don't want to achieve. So we want that that well pump to create that cone of depression above the twenty percent mark. And what you see is, you know, existing wells that historically declined, which was probably the case in yours, where you couldn't continuously get the yield over time. If you pull the well, put the well pump down further and further, you could maintain that over time. So unfortunately, we're not allowed to allow you to continue to do that. So that's why you have to raise it up. So I can maintain that twenty percent. Yep. Were there any other questions about the geology? Or the overall kind of program?
No, that was a very good lesson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so I'm going to turn it over to Joe, and Joe's going to get into some of the particulars related to your permit. And then he's going to drill down onto some of those areas that we talked about related to where is that critical cell and how far away? And where is that area of impact and how it could expand based on some future proposal?
Again, I'm Joe Griss, so within the Office of Water Supply, we have multiple programs. And my program is the Water Withdrawal Program. So I oversee the groundwater withdrawal permitting program, the surface water permitting program, and the compliance program for both. So anything with water withdrawal permitting comes through my office. So the town of Bowling Green received what we call an existing user permit back in two thousand and eighteen. Reasons called an existing user permit, it was when, back around twenty fourteen, the Eastern Virginia Groundwater Management Area was expanded northward into this region by the General Assembly. So those existing users that we identified that were meeting the permitting criteria, they got what we call the initial permit or the existing user permit. This is a permit that doesn't go through public comment. It does not get a technical evaluation initially. It does not have mitigation plans tied to it. It's just to get you in the door and start gaining information.